I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Hey, well, welcome and welcome to the city council meeting Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. With that, if could have a roll call, please.
Luther.
Yeah.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland.
Yeah.
Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman. Summerfield.
Here.
Okay, thank you. No special recognitions this evening, but with that, if we'd like to move on down to for approval of minutes, if anybody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes, Laura?
I will move to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to Laura's motion? Lee?
Second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. Moves us down to public hearings tonight. We have a public hearing this evening on the proposed ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash sixteen establishing the two thousand twenty-five general fund operating budget and tax levy. During this public hearing portion, you can come up to the podium. Please make sure the microphone is on, sign in, give us your address and your name. But you can speak on the public hearing this evening. We would like, we would ask that you're be as brief as possible, but we do appreciate you being here. And at this time, we'd like to open up the budget, the public hearing on the general fund operating budget and tax levy. So this time, public hearing is open. So come on up to the microphone.
Okay, I'm Loreen Vedder, five one five twenty-first Street North in Menominee. In our process of budgeting, we have a responsibility as a community here in Menominee to take care of those who are disabled and disadvantaged. We should put a high priority on assisting the nonprofits who provide for the many services, including assistance with homelessness, food insecurity, services for the elderly, and care for those threatened by domestic abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Loreen. Public hearing is open?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Harvey Weidman, and I'm here on behalf of the Dunn County Humane Society again. Later this evening, you will be voting on the nonprofit subsidy requests for two thousand twenty-five, and I'm here to strongly urge you to reconsider and go against the recommendation in your packet this evening. By denying our subsidy request and the request of the Mon friendship center, you are sending a very clear message to us that you do not care about our mission or the populations that we serve. I understand the limitations of your budget and of that balancing act, believe me. At the nonprofit that I work for, the Dunn County Humane Society, we pinch every penny. We are reusing supplies that are marked as single use, and we reuse them, sanitize, and reuse again. We have to ask for donations for basic supplies like Post-its or laundry detergent because we cannot afford to purchase them on our own. We offer essential services to your constituents that they truly can't access anywhere else in Dunn County. By denying the subsidy request for the Dunn County Humane Society and the Mon Friendship Center, you are devaluing those services and punishing those of us who have not asked for a subsidy in the past. Our independence and the fact that we have been limping along on our own is now being wielded against us. And truly, that that's upsetting to us. We came here asking for your help, and together, our two organizations are asking for less than point three percent of your nineteen million dollar budget. So again, please reconsider this request for Dunn County Humane Society and the Mon Friendship Center to help us continue to serve your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Public hearing is still open. If somebody else would like to speak, come on forward. What? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here again on behalf of the Menominee Senior Center. My name is Donna Collins, and I am the director there. And I appreciate the couple of minutes. I will keep it brief. We all know that the Senior Center is very important and essential to our community. I have come to realize that there are many neighboring communities that don't have what we have, and we are very appreciative for all of the support in the past that the city has given us in order to operate. Knowing that there are challenges in setting an operating budget, I am respectfully requesting that the recommended cut in our subsidy is reduced. To some point, we will understand if it can't be. You know, like I said, we are all very appreciative, and that includes our members and our staff and our board of directors for everything that the city does do for us and for the building that they provide for us. And I mean, it's wonderful. It couldn't be, it couldn't be better. So I am respectfully requesting that, you know, if possible, that the twenty-five percent cut is reduced to less than twenty-five percent. We work very hard to make the money to keep operating at our current budget, and we will continue to even even with a cut. But if that could be reduced or maybe even spread over a couple of years, that would allow us time to plan for that kind of reduction in in the subsidy and therefore in our income. So regardless, on behalf of the board of directors and our members, our members are very, very appreciative for what the city does for us, and they do recognize it. And every chance I get, I remind them that you are at the crux of being able for us to do what we do and have the wonderful Senior Center that we have. So, thank you. I apologize for my shaky voice. I'm not quite sure where that came from, but I appreciate your time and your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Good evening, everyone. Lucas Chase, two oh five Main Street, Menominee, Wisconsin. I'm the executive director of the Mabel Tainter. And I'm just want to speak briefly in support of funding all of these wonderful nonprofits to the full amount that they requested for two thousand twenty-five. We have so many great nonprofits here in Menominee, and I know that the legacy that this council and this administration wants to leave is one of support of these wonderful organizations and not one of reduced funds. I know you received a list of area or local towns that also similar in size to Menominee that didn't support organizations like Menominee does. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't, and that doesn't mean that they don't in different ways. So we need to keep that in mind as well. But we do wonderful work with the support of the city, but we do a lot with a little. And if we're given even less, then we can do less. So I just really want to urge the council to consider that, and I think that the legacy that we want to leave here, and when we're talking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of nineteen million dollars, it's it's not that hard. We can figure out where that could come from. So just really want to speak in support of all of these wonderful nonprofits and all the work that we do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lucas.
Hello, my name is Nicole Manson. I am currently a senior at Stout, and I am the new assistant director at the Senior Center, and I serve on the board at Stepping Stones, and I'm an intern at the Bridge to Hope. So these suggested budget cuts are impacting a lot of services that I feel strongly about. In a recent research project that I'm working on, immunity is a solution for a lot of the pain in the world, a lot of the behavioral issues for children, for anyone that feels lonely, because loneliness is an epidemic right now. So having these community supports and these services provided is something that Menominee is really special for. I've lost my train of thought, but I am happy to tell you I have been a Menominee citizen since two thousand fourteen, and my family, although we've had time as homeless people, we are homeowners, so we are an example of what it's like to support people in the community. So I want you to consider changing the budget plan to to support these services. And now my mind went blank, so thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Nicole. Anybody else? This public hearing is still open. You can last call for a public hearing. Okay.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Kilby. I live at five ten eleventh Street East in Menominee, and I would like to start out just thanking you all for doing the very difficult work of sitting down and figuring out the budget. It's an enormous job, and I appreciate it. I would like to ask you to consider stop thinking about subsidies to nonprofits, which are sometimes considered extra services, but I feel like they're an investment. They're an investment in our future as a community, and they're an investment in a lot of different ways. When I'm sitting down at a Luddington Guard Band concert or attending the Winter Days Parade, I am in community with a lot of people that I wouldn't necessarily otherwise hang out with. And I think that is an important opportunity that we give each other to live in community with people that we don't always agree with. Also, I think that our nonprofits add a financial improvement to our community. I think the Chamber of Commerce could get you some good numbers about how much money comes into Menominee because of the Mabel Tainter, because of the historic downtown, because of the Rossbach Museum where I work currently, because of the library. When people come into Menominee to take advantage of all of these wonderful places, they're also shopping to eat, they're staying at hotels, they're spending time here, they're telling their friends about this place. So as an investment in our community and an investment financially in the future of our community, I would like to ask that you continue investing in our nonprofits here in Menominee. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Rebecca. Okay, public hearing is still open. If anybody else would like to speak, now is your opportunity to do so. Last call for public hearings. Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion and move on with the rest of our meeting. Okay, under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can come up and speak at the podium for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. Please give us your name and your address, and public comment is now open, so.
Hi, everybody. My name's Becca Schoenborn, twenty-seven twenty-one Nelson Drive. I am the executive director of Downtown Menominee. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item six B, which is the proposed operating plan for my organization. The reason that I wanted to speak to you about it, everything in there is business as usual, although we did change a little bit of language in our bid cap. So currently, our Business Improvement District is capped at thirty-five hundred dollars per property in assessment tax that they would pay in. The three buildings that removing this cap would impact would be Trimble Dental, the five oh three Broadway apartment building, and the Cobblestone Hotel, all fairly large buildings in our district that when this cap was put in place, we didn't have an issue running into that sort of number. So it's a great number or a great reason redevelopment-wise that we get to explore removing that. So my board voted to remove that bid cap, which would result in some more funding coming into our organization. And as we go through this process of working towards being a little bit more financially independent, that is one of the main things that we can do within our organization to make funding a little bit easier for us next year. So I'm asking for your approval in our operating plan for two thousand twenty-five, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any when we get there. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Becca. M thirty, right. Okay, thank you. Okay, public comment is still open. If anybody else would like to speak.
My name is Jeff Rowley. My address is three hundred Crescent Street, Menominee. And yeah, three hundred Crescent Street is what I am here to talk to you all about tonight. I feel different up here to talk about myself, my own business, and fly fishing instead of downtown Menominee. But I am requesting TIF financing for my property at three hundred Crescent Street. The building that I'm referencing here, I'm assuming all of you know, when you drive down Crescent Street, it's that white little garage building, and it used to have a roofing sign on it forever. It's an eyesore. It is an ugly little building in the middle of our town, and I want to fix that. The building is currently classified as a blighted property, so the tax assessment value at sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. I'm looking at investing an additional roughly total a hundred thousand dollars into it. What I'm here to request from council today is approval to utilize the TID to allow me TIF financing for ten percent of the exterior cost for the renovation of that building. I plan on putting Hardyboard, not sorry, not Hardyboard, LP Smart siding on the side of the entire building to cover up the old stucco that is currently falling apart, falling off. There's holes in it. The structure, it's structurally sound. I have all of the engineering work done on that end of it, and everything is kind of ready to go, except that it's a building that's valued at sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars that I purchased at sixty-five thousand dollars because I knew the value of the location and the visibility. However, in order to bring that up to code and to the aesthetic value that it would need in order to place a business inside of there, I need a little bit of help because I'm going to invest another hundred and some thousand dollars into a building that is not valued at that. I'm going to be upside down right away, which I am more than okay with because I am a hundred percent confident in the business model that I plan on putting in that. The business model, my business plan, is in your packet, and I am more than happy to stand back up here and talk about fly fishing for an hour or two hours, the river systems that we have in our area, and how this is going to be a very unique new addition to our downtown and cater to a demographic that we currently do not draw into our community. So if there are any other questions, I am more than happy to stand back up and talk about when we get to that agenda item. Otherwise, I will leave it at that because, as I said, I can ramble and pitch my business forever. So thank you all for your consideration. Thank you for everything you do, and I would especially like to thank Eric Atkinson for his assistance in putting this packet together.
Oh, good job, Jeff. You know, that was a good speech on the fly, I might say. So, okay. The public comments is still open. If anybody else would like to come up and speak, now is your opportunity to do so. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close the public comment portion and move on with the rest of our meeting. Okay, tonight, under unfinished business, we have the Dunn County Transit Agreement. Eric, if you want to bring us up to speed on that.
Yes, Mayor, I can. So Dunn County Transit in years past used to be one of our subsidy request organizations. Then after examining the services that they provide, we felt it was much more appropriate to put them in there as a contract agreement. What you have in front of you in your pack, it is a contract agreement for three years of service. The cost of the service remains the same. It is twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars total per year, which is issued out in payments each quarter of six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. The service allows for the community routes to take place, charge transit passengers a dollar for a service, helps get them to doctor's appointments and other locations here in town. The administration has worked with the Dunn County Transit to come up with this agreement, and we feel it is a fair agreement to continue the services and locks in a good price for three years.
Great. Well, Dunn County Transit does offer a great service to our community. I know that ridership is up quite a lot, not only with Stout students, but also City Menominee patrons and so forth. So I think it's a great idea to support this, and if anybody would like to offer this up in the form of a motion or have discussion, you can do so at this time. Gretchen?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven ridership agreement with the Dunn County Transit as presented.
Okay, good motion. Chad?
I'd second Gretchen's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion on this matter? Roll call vote, please.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfield?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And then brings us down to five B, proposed ordinance two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four sixteen establishing the two thousand twenty-five general fund operating budget and tax levy. Overall, Menominee is doing great, and we're in good shape, but there's been some some hiccups. We had a thirty million dollar valuation decrease, and I don't know how the valuation works. Maybe Eric can take us through that a little bit further, but there was a lot of time spent on the budget this year. I think as much time or more time than in past years. David Schofield was a large help this year in figuring out the budget along with Eric Atkinson. I know we had talked to Lowell Prangy, who passed administrator for thirty-five years several times. The numbers came in late, and I think Eric is still waiting for a couple of numbers if I'm not mistaken. But I'm going to let Eric speak a little bit to the budget before we go into the next phase of this. So Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to draw your attention into your packet. There is a tax rate calculation worksheet that's in front of you. David, if you don't mind scrolling to that spot. Should be towards the back of that section. There you go, levy options. Thank you. So one of the, oh, can you go back up? Thank you. So one of the challenges that was presented in the budget this year was the change in our assessed value. So if you take a peek at two thousand twenty-three, our assessed value was about one point two seven seven billion dollars. This year, our valuation came in at one point two four or five billion dollars, so we lost about thirty million dollars in value. It's largely due to the changes in the personal property tax laws. That change in the valuation then had a negative impact on how much money we could levy or how much money we could bring in for the next year, which then really triggered what you saw for option A, if you want to scroll down to that for a mill rate and a funding tax levy. So if you'll notice on option A, the proposed tax levy is the same as what we had for this year, two thousand twenty-four, seven point six four five million. In order to just be able to generate that levy revenue, we would still have to raise our mill rate due to the loss of valuation to that six point four eight. And if we did that, that leaves us with an estimated contingency amount of about sixty-three thousand dollars. And we do not recommend that particular option because that keeps a very low contingency in case there is an emergency with rising costs and other things that we just don't know about or what we can expect next year. It puts us in a bit of a bind, and that is why we took a look at options B and C for for what we were doing as well as what the reason why behind the recommended cuts to the subsidies. The assessed value valuation, I do not know when that is going to particularly catch up with itself, but that does have a negative impact as the way we calculate our mill rate. In all likelihood, that that will not improve as far as getting a closer amount to our equalized value until we do a full new assessment. But again, changes in that personal property tax will have an altering effect on our assessed value. So the reasons why we want to do, take a look at options B and C, B keeps a healthy contingency at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. C is also a decent option for keeping a contingency at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a recommended allocation of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in fund balance. You may ask, well, what what is the purpose of the fund balance, or what what does that do for us? Showing that we have continued investment in our fund balance and that we're able to make investments in in our overall financial structure allows us with a greater opportunity to increase our credit rating for us to be able to do borrowing. It allows us to get a lower interest rate. It allows us to be able to keep our debt service down long term. We're looking at borrowing next year for a two-year cycle. Our current credit rating is A plus, which is not terrible at all. We're hoping to get to double A minus so that way we could try to save. Now, I'm not, I'm not going to stand up here, actually sit up here and pretend that making that one change to option C is going to get us over the hump into that double A minus. Really, standards and pores, our global rating services, wants to see consistent investment in that direction for a couple of years. Additionally, they also take in other socioeconomic factors in the community to determine what your credit rating will be. So I don't want to tell you that if you make that change and you choose option C in that format, that that is going to get us to there. I don't think it will, not this time around. Maybe two years from now when we borrow again, we would stand a much better chance. But that's the, that's the reason why option C was presented in front of you. So you'd set a hundred and twenty-five thousand aside out of that contingency. It would go right to that fund balance piece.
Eric, can you touch a little bit on the expenditure restraint also, that we normally get a certain amount of dollars? And and the reason that we wouldn't apply or wouldn't it wouldn't work very well for us this year, the expenditure restraint program, Eric?
Yeah, so in in many of the years, we've qualified for the expenditure restraint program. Essentially, that's to demonstrate that you've been financially responsible in your budget to receive additional pay. The amount of payment or revenue that has come in is varied, depending upon how many communities across the state both qualified for that expenditure restraint funds. So some years it was more than others. The last payment that we received for it was forty-one thousand dollars. One of the qualifications to be able to receive the expenditure restraint program is to have a mill rate of at least five. By looking at the mill rate options, you would think that, well, no problem, we qualify for that because we stayed within levy limits or over five. The state looks at the equalized value, much like what the county does when they create their mill rate. In our formula for our mill rates, we have to utilize assessed value as well. So when you utilize the formula that the state and the county uses, which is a requirement of the expenditure restraint program, we fall below that mark or above four point eight eight. So if you wanted to qualify for that forty-one thousand dollars, we would have to raise our levy by about a million dollars to show that we are being financially responsible. I'm not recommending to do that. We can figure out the other forty-one thousand dollars. So I, I want to put that out there that there are some interesting restraints due to legislation and statutory guidelines that we must follow. That happens to be one of them. Now, and I want to finish up with this last thing, and I promised to stop talking. Although our assessed value went down, and and that is, that's not good. One of the reasons why the state changes changed the way that personal property tax was done was so that way businesses and manufacturers that are looking to come into communities when they're applying a significant technological upgrade or the cost of equipment is not being taxed inside of their buildings, thus allowing Wisconsin to have a better opportunity for attracting industry coming into our industrial parks, our commercial parks, and whatnot. That was the reason reasoning behind the change. So it does have a positive impact to be able to try to recruit those in the terms of economic development in the short term, until those gains are met by bringing in those businesses. It does make us have to take a hit.
Thank you, Eric. You know, it's interesting, two expenditure restraint program. When Lowell and I were years ago, when it was first introduced, it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, then it was a hundred and fifty, then a hundred and thirty-five, then a hundred and twenty-five, and now forty-one thousand dollars. And expenditure restraint, it seems like it would serve just the opposite purpose that, you know, if we're really being fiscally responsible, then we should be adept at getting those expenditure restraint dollars, but it doesn't appear to be that way. But so even with But so even with the amount of extra buildup in the city and all that we've got going on, the industrial park and tech park and and all the Manominee is doing, and Manominee is doing very well in the two districts and other areas and the so forth and so on. Still, when it's the devaluation of thirty million dollars, that's a tough, a tough one to handle because thirty million dollars, you know, that's a lot of tax valuation and and in our current mill rate, you know, that would make up the difference in 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 what our budget would appear to be. So that being said, do you have any questions or anything on this or do you, Cody, you got a question?
Yeah, I was wondering for option C, is there any significance to the one hundred and twenty five thousand number for the investing in the fund balance?
Just to raise the fund balance, they like to have the city have a decent fund back balance. I'm not sure what our fund balance is, but maybe Eric can attest to that better.
Our fund balance is about two point seven million dollars right now. Where standards and pores and global ratings will look at is at the end of the year, what do you have left that you've underspent that can move move into that fund balance to try to build that up? One of the things that we haven't really done is set aside money to be able to go directly into that fund balance. The hundred and twenty five thousand isn't necessarily a magic number. You could direct it at a hundred thousand or fifty thousand. We kept it at the one twenty five because that still gets us to the two hundred and fifty thousand in contingency, which we feel pretty safe with to be able to maintain operations through a year. Provided the unknown costs that could approach. And then that also shows that we're making a commitment to build that that fund balance by setting that money essentially away from what we would use during our normal operating year.
Good. Good. Other questions or Gretchen?
It's not necessarily a question, but I want to get it in there before we work on introducing the general budget. Considering stability that we want to keep in mind with the community and to give the subsidy entities in town a little bit more time, I would like to make a motion to adjust the general fund subsidy amounts to the twenty twenty four budget levels, accepting the Luddington Guard Band, which will be at the twenty twenty five request level of twelve thousand dollars. With the option, I don't know if I need to add this to motion, but with the option for the cascading twenty five percent to begin in twenty twenty six rather than twenty twenty five.
Okay, is that?
Say on the last part not to include it in the motion because that would be decided next year. We can't make decisions tonight for next year's budget.
A motion without the last portion with the twenty five percent portion.
Just to be clear, does that include the new requests as well for the subsidies?
Okay, okay, so we have a motion, or actually be it's a motion on the floor, correct? So we do have a motion on the floor. We'd go through the introduction process. Oh, I'm sorry. This is just the motion for the, I'm sorry, this the, very good. Okay. All right, then Laura?
I will second that motion.
Okay, so now it takes us back into discussion mode. You know, I feel pretty com comfortable with option B. I know option C gives us some lower latitude, but it does cost the taxpayer additional monies. And I think being wise to tax dollars and and listening to taxpayers, I worry about overtaxing our public and so forth. So it does scare me a bit to outstretch. It is an option on the on the on the table. But it does stretch our arms open a little bit, gathering in more money from the taxpayer. So that being said, you know, I yes, Lee?
Based on that motion, what's that do their figures we're looking at?
So it it really is going to depend upon which ordinance you decide to adopt or like which of these options you want to adopt. So if we're, if we're talking about option C and we have that three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, what I would do to make the budget as simple as possible, that increased amount of money to get to the twenty twenty four funded level, I would pull that from where that hundred and twenty five thousand dollars is dedicated to the fund balance. And then less that amount of money is what I would dedicate to the fund balance. Apply the funds for the twenty twenty four level, except for the Luddington Guard Band, if I understood that right, to the recommended twenty twenty five level. I'd plug that into the operational levy and then that'll keep your proposed tax levy the same in option C. If we do that in option B, then we would be reducing our contingency amount. That's, that's where we would pull that one from. So two hundred and fifty thousand less whatever that dollar amount is for increasing it back to that twenty twenty four levels. The other option is then we could establish a a special meeting to try to recalculate contingencies. That's another option that's on the table for this this body. If you do option A, then then we go into the negative balance and that's, that's not great. But then I would say a special meeting time for something like that too. So you have a couple of options, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Lee.
Well, we could do option B and increase that seven point nine million to something whatever this twenty five percent for the subsidies.
You can do that.
But we're looking at different figures than what we're looking at right now.
You would, you would be looking at a different tax rate, but for purposes of tonight for the ordinance, we need to just know what the levy amount is. I can come back at a December second meeting with what the mill rate would be created based on that. So if the if the additional, if you take the twenty five percent on and let's just say for argument's sake, it's thirty thousand dollars, you could add thirty thousand dollars to that that proposed tax levy total.
And that's not including Main Street and the April Tainer.
Correct. They'll be, they'll be on the budgets for the tax increment districts and project plans that get approved on December second.
But I assume those would also go up to the hundred percent of what they're off, they're asked. If we're doing the rest, I don't know what the motion meant if that included those two entities.
The motion I can say exactly. So based on the split out with the contract, the general fund subsidy recommendations and the TID fifteen and center recommendation, I'm just speaking about the general fund subsidy recommendations are Stepping Stones, Senior Center, Luddington Band, Bridge to Hope, Evergreen Cemetery, Historical Society. And that's it.
So it'd be night, it would be increasing the sixty eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to ninety one thousand dollars.
Correct.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that, but you know, more tax dollars against the public and, you know, these days and age, it's it's tough to raise taxes on our public and that's what it equates to. So, yes, Laura?
So we're looking at increasing the taxes in any case and taxes are just a part of being a citizen. It's how we fund society. And I feel very strongly that this, the community groups that have asked for subsidies in the past, that it it feels like a a betrayal of them to without any warning effectively cut anything of what they have come to expect from the last couple of years. So I don't think that we should cut the subsidy requests this year. If we want to talk about that for next year, I would be okay with that. But it just, it feels just wrong to me. It's, it's like if someone who is on welfare all of a sudden said, got told by the government, oh, you don't have enough, we're not giving you as much money. It just, it's, it's, I don't feel that it's right. And so I feel very strongly that we should support our subsidies at the requested amounts from the twenty twenty four budget.
Well, and I understand your feeling, Laura. I feel the same way in a lot of respects. Again, the state of Wisconsin, when you cut the valuation by thirty million dollars to us, that's the difference and that's the difference we're trying to make up. And that's why the budget, that's why there was so much time spent on the budget this year. There was a lot of numbers, a lot of equations, a lot of discussion, sometimes not comfortable discussion on how do we handle this without raising taxes, et cetera. So I think it's the, it's the thirty million dollar cut from the state of Wisconsin that put us into this situation. And that's why we're faced with this dilemma that we're faced with. So, yes, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, Randy, you spoke of the assessed value reduction of thirty million dollars, correct? Now, I'm I'm certainly don't know this firsthand or know this for certain, but you know, generally trends, you know, do occur. And do you have any indication of the situation for next year as far as the assessed values? I mean, is this something that's gonna continue to happen to the city, thirty million dollars or five or whatever it is? I mean, the trend was going up. We all know that, I think. And this is quite a hit. I mean, is the trend, do you think this will continue? I mean, it's very possible, right?
Well, and I think Eric could be in a better position to answer this than than I, but what I do am concerned with is we're going to have to do a revale on the city of Manominee. So when we do that, it's going to push everything way back up again. The taxes are going to go up again in Manominee. And that's, that's a concern of mine also. So I don't know, Eric?
So if you take a look at the the trend, we were on the way up going, going through to twenty twenty and then from twenty twenty one until twenty twenty four, we now see us starting to trend downward in assessed value. So if you look at the trends, certainly, yes, we could go up. There's that possibility. But we're on a, on a good three, four year swing now downward. So part of the reason and apprehension with this year's budget going into next year is that concern. What what is the market going to do for us? How is inflation going to impact? Is our valuation going to continue to go down or is it going to remain static or are we going to see an upward trend? And it's, it's too early to be able to tell. And so I don't have a great answer for you, Eric. I think that's a great question to ask. I I wish I could have something more definitive.
Yeah, that that's certainly fine and I I assume that would be the answer, but it is certainly something we have to consider and probably consider that likely that is the case. That's just my opinion, I guess.
Thank you. No, David?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Matt, Matthew Crowe, go ahead.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the hit this year came from Act twelve, correct? And so the state legislature passed Act twelve. And that's where the assessed value kind of made where we lost it there. And then there's a chance that we will hit, you know, a higher excess value in the next coming years as, you know, as things kind of level out or do we know yet?
Well, then that is certainly part of the, part of the issues. And with those changes that have taken place in the legislature in the last few years, we haven't seen the shared revenues increase to the level that can help make up for those differences. Certainly that could change, but that's going to require some legislative changes too, as they plan that their budget. And of course, that's, that's unpredictable. And we still are are tethered to our levy limits, which we are restricted to net new construction. Our net new construction was about one point zero five percent. We can offset some of that with our debt service that we have on the books. But we also want to be cognizant not to drive our debt up so much that that puts us in a potential bind that we're backing that debt against the taxpayers because you have to pay the debt first before you can do the other operational expenses. And then also it could potentially have a negative impact on our credit rating. There's just a tremendous amount of factors that go into play. It's a great question, man.
Eric, another thing too that plays into this a little bit, the reduction in municipal monies for municipal services. You know, we're getting hit constantly and we have a university in town. We offer fire, police, I mean, not police for the university, but there's a lot of municipal services for schools and colleges and of course the churches and so forth, but the, the, the monies that we get back from municipal services again dwindling. Again, it puts the city in in a box. Randy?
When I did have a job, I worked at a nonprofit for sixteen years. And every year we did a certain amount of fundraising. And I don't think that the city has promised the subsidy to these folks forever. We gave it to them, but there was nothing that said we're going to do it for the next year or for next year or the next year. So I think this is, it does happen. Our financial lives all change. So I understand the twenty five percent cut in that I guess I'm supportive of that.
Gretchen?
So in response to that and what's been said, I I want to keep the perspective on how much money we're talking about here. The, again, it's great fundraising. They're definitely giving them another year, for example. Knowing that a twenty five percent cascade reduction is going to be coming next year allows them to get lined up, get new ideas, get I get their funding in place to make up for the loss. It's November budgets. I mean, a lot of these budgets have already been made. And having to make up that loss right now means that they're rather than putting effort into supporting the community, which it can be argued the value that is gained from those organizations compared to the, you know, five thousand dollars that they're asking for. All of these requests put together is one truck that, you know, one city vehicle. So so perspective wise, the value that we're receiving in our community and what makes our community you know, a great place to live and what makes our community attractive and of the, the value that receive, you know, that isn't seen, it's not direct value, but the indirect value we receive from these organizations is is pretty huge. And we're not talking about a huge ask this year based on, you know, it and there are fluctuations that are more than the amounts of these subsidies all the time. And the inflation is going up for everybody and then there's a pinch for everybody and we and I definitely appreciate that and understand that and part of the reason that I didn't include the new asks because those new asks would just start being reduced like we, but giving time for those organizations to get their feet under them and come up with ideas on how they're going to replace this funding and not force those organizations to put effort into extra fundraising and because that is effort and time and people power that is not being put towards directly serving our community needs. So that is, that was my thought process on keeping this year those subsidies and preferably option C. So that we can really set ourselves up, you know, kind of investing in the future now. And to, you know, we always argue about when, you know, taxes increase. But we got to remember what the taxes are for. They're for, you know, our community being strong and healthy and attractive and improving in the future. So it's, it's an investment. Taxes are an investment in our community. So that's where my thought process was with that and trying not to penny and dime. Because there is a cliff if you go past a certain point and communities just they're kind of, it's, there is a downward spiral that occurs when you remove the things that make a community unique and attractive to be in. So that was me. That's why I did what I did.
Okay, I'm going to play a little bit of the devil's advocate, I think. I agree. There's a lot of great effort being done and these nonprofits are doing a great job for our community. The thing about it that 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 strikes me a little bit on something that you said Gretchen was extra effort to go out and fundraise and so forth. Yes, extra effort, but here the city is putting the burden saying you must pay more money in taxes because we are giving this out. Now, that being said, there's a difference between somebody free will giving to an organization as a fundraiser and or being forced upon by the city to pay in more taxes. The question I think I have that 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 really strikes me a little bit off a little bit is not only other communities not giving subsidies and so on, but that you know, the, here we have Dunn County, a lot of our services are driven through the city and a lot of folks in the county are using these services. But but does the county give any help to these nonprofits? They give no subsidies whatsoever. They still charge a wheel tax. They get the half percent sales tax. There's a lot of money that flows through the county, but you know, they, and I'm just, I'm not mentioning the county to really pick on the county other than just making it known that the city Manominee is doing a lot for a lot of people. The townships, we offer, you know, the fire protection throughout the townships. You know, the police, we, you know, we have multi jurisdictional efforts going on. So if there's a problem in the county or somewhere else, you know, our police officers are are filling in and serving those and protecting our community and and it's, it's hard for me because I get the feedback from a broad range of people throughout the spectrum of our community saying. And, and it's, it's hard for me because I get the feedback from a, a broad range of people throughout the, uh, spectrum of our community saying, hey, we need this and we need that. And how come you're not funding this organization? How come we're not funding all of the four ages? How come we're not funding the church, nonprofit churches? How come we're not funding all of these other organizations that really could use the help as well? And, and so it's, it gives me a lot of heartburn because, oh, it'd be great to have, you know, here it is. Here's what you need. Here's what you need. Here's what you need. Here's what you need. But at some point, we have to realize that it's the taxpayer that we're forcing their hand to have to pay more. And, and I was talking to somebody the other day and they said, you know what? If, if I have to, I'll contribute more to this organization or more to that organization. Eric and I had a conversation about something that could be worked out in the future. And, and maybe it's a way to go. And, um, and, and what that would be is if we had a contingency amount and say we got halfway through the year and, and we didn't have a pump blowout or we had some extra money in our contingency. Maybe at that point, we could offer some grant monies out to, you know, some of these organizations and such. But at this time, um, it's really hard for me to put out to the taxpayer that we're gonna raise your taxes whether you like it or not. And that's the problem, whether they like it or not, where they could contribute more to these organizations. But I don't necessarily feel it should be on the burden of the city and burden of the taxpayer. And that's why so much time was spent on option A, B, and C. Uh, and trying to readjust the thought process on how we work with the tax money and how this goes out, uh, as, um, dollars to, uh, nonprofit organizations. If you really wanted to look at nonprofits, oh my gosh, we'd have a hundred, two hundred, three hundred nonprofits come through here and they would all want money. Of course, they would. Uh, and, and that's great, uh, if we have the money to afford to give them. I really have heartburn with, um, option C, just as the fact that, you know, it is a significant enough of a tax increase. I know we're out pushing more land sales in industrial park. We're talking every day. We're working hard to, to say, here we are in Menominee, Wisconsin. We got great land. We got great schools. We got great university. We got a great tech school. We got golf courses. We got all this great stuff happening. But we're gonna raise your taxes. And that's tough. That's tough in my chair anyway. So, um, that being said, I, 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 I want more feedback on this, on this, um, on this budget. I mean, I can go with the flow, but it's, 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 it's a tough realm when we have to, when we have to make changes and no matter which way it is. Randy?
And one of the questions, and I don't know how it is exactly, but one of the questions that people fill out when they request in the funds is what are you doing so you don't need the money anymore? What are you gonna be doing to, to alleviate this need for it? So it's, the question should have, should be there. Um, and then I, I don't know if anybody really reads the answers when they come in very well. Um, or even rates them. But the question is there, what, what are you going to do in the future so you don't require these funds?
Oh, um, yeah, Matthew's got his hand up. Thank you, Lee. Go ahead, Matthew.
Yeah, just one thing I wanna comment on is, you know, looking at some of these things as an investment, you know, you got stepping stones, you got bridge to hope. Um, other, you know, downtown Menominee and, and other, you know, not to say one's more important than the other, but part of being fiscally responsible is investing. And I've worked for some very large companies and some very big budgets, both operating budgets, maintenance budgets and capital budgets. And have had, you know, good times and have had, uh, really times of economic downturns. And I've seen these budgets, uh, handled very well and very poorly. And in times that they're handled poorly, they end up being a skeleton budget, right? Skeleton operating budget. And, uh, you know, no capital, um, expenditures are in the time and the times that are done well. You still have to have a healthy operating budget. You still have to run the show. And, you know, you actually have to have a bigger operating budget because things are more expensive. And then on top of that, you still do projects that have a good return on investment, right? You're still, um, you know, wanting to, uh, try to keep, you know, growth in somewhere. You can't grow if you don't invest. And then, um, you know, on top of that, it's a pay me now or pay me later. If, if some of these, you know, organizations end up really hurting like, uh, you know, stepping stones or, or, you know, some of the other ones I mentioned as well. So, you know, keep that in mind as well, uh, when we're doing this is that, yeah, there is a balance to this. There is a, I don't know what the exact, uh, answer is if it's everything that Gretchen is asking for or if it's somewhere in between, uh, option, you know, option B and what Gretchen's asking for, for the general fund. But keep that in mind that, you, you know, part of, part of being responsible, uh, fiscally is, is borrowing, um, is investing. And I'm here in Texas right now, uh, for work. And my friends here don't pay any state income tax, but they're just about to pay sixteen thousand dollars in property tax. Because though they don't pay any income tax, the budget has to balance somewhere, right? The money has to come somewhere, you know, either, either the, um, companies are gonna get taxed and the property taxes are gonna get taxed or the income's gonna get taxed. But the taxes have to come from somewhere. And though I, I don't have anything against Act twelve or what the state legislature did, it did take the assessed value away. And the, you know, to balance the budget, the taxes have to come from somewhere. And, uh, I don't wanna have to raise taxes on, on, uh, you know, the people. And you have to think about the elderly. And so I get what Randy's saying as well. People are on fixed incomes. And it's a tough decision to make, but at the same time, um, we have to look at the investments that these, you know, these nonprofits give to our community as well.
Okay, thank you. Cody?
Um, I'm also thinking that these, uh, subsidies as investments, you know, what happens if down the line, uh, organizations fail or falter? And then the cost of those programs either fall to the city or those programs don't exist and our community is worse off for it. Um, the problem I have with the motion that we're discussing is I'm not a huge fan of leaving the other, uh, requests from Humane Society, the Mung Friendship Center just unaddressed. I think if we are going to mess with the subsidy recommendations, we should include something for them. Cuz it, you know, just because they didn't apply last year, I don't think they should be necessarily excluded when, you know, they've come to us for support and provide extremely important services.
Okay, I do wanna address something that you said though, Cody, that, um, you know, Humane Society, we do have a contract for per capita. Uh, Eric?
Yes, we do have a, uh, contract with the Dunn County Humane Society that we're required to have to provide animal services. And, you know, to provide those services and we brought that forward before council for approval. So this would be a new request that came forward. So we, we routinely spend anywhere between thirty two and thirty four thousand dollars on our contract right now.
Thank you. Oh, oh, Ben?
Um, Gretchen, I just need clarification on one thing. I just wanna make sure that, um, understanding the motion on it. So the motion was to do the twenty twenty four, um, what we budgeted for the subsidies except for the Luddington Guard Band. That, just confirming that does not include the Dunn County Humane Society and Dunn County Transit because we have contracts with them in place. Is that correct?
Sorry, the, the thirty three thousand three thirteen for the Humane Society and the twenty seven nine forty for the transit move to the contract for services. So all of the general fund, current general fund subsidy recommendation subsidies, those being at their twenty twenty four level, budgeted level.
And Laura, that was your understanding as well with seconding the motion, correct? Thank you.
Say, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, I, I believe, I believe that number is ninety one thousand that, that she's suggesting.
Is that the increase?
Yes, it is. It's ninety one thousand.
But is that the increase of the, of the request versus last year?
The, the, the total amount would be ninety one thousand dollars. It doesn't include the contracts. And it doesn't include the new subsidy requests for twenty twenty five. So it gets it that twenty five percent back up, except for the Luddington Guard Band one. She kept at the recommended level of like, like nine thousand, whatever.
Well, twelve, twelve because of, I left it at the twelve thousand request because, yeah, because it was bumped up to twenty in twenty twenty four. So back down to twelve where it was at previous to that.
So the, the blue column would be at the bottom there instead of sixty eight thousand two fifty, it would be ninety one thousand.
Correct. So we're talking about twenty three thousand dollar difference.
Twenty two seven fifty, yep.
Correct.
Laura?
So, so two points, um, to, to your argument before, Randy. Um, we're not asking to increase the tax rate to, to fund these subsidies. We are looking to increase the tax rate to make things work and to keep things steady. We are discounting the sub, the subsidies. We're, we're removing them. So we're not asking for more taxes to fund these. We're removing this, some of the subsidies that were already in our budget. And if we are looking at twenty three thousand dollars, if I am doing my calculations right, if we cut, and this, this is hard as a teacher. If we cut the schools and conferences line from everything, that would get us twenty two thousand dollars. Um, by, by one quarter, excuse me. So reduce the schools and conferences line from each area by one quarter. I believe that gets us twenty two thousand dollars. Um, at that point, it's, we're talking about two thousand dollars. Um, so that would be one way that we could have a balanced budget. It, and the, the pain comes to the city employees. Um, but we still have the subsidies for the community.
Well, you know, that's a unique way of looking at it. Um, it's still real dollars. It still raises the tax levy. And no matter how you look at it, it's real dollars that they're, if, 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 say we didn't give out any subsidies, say the subsidies just went away. Well, we just saved the tax dollars of three hundred and how much? Three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars?
If you look at what was originally requested, not including the contracts, it's about three hundred nineteen thousand six hundred fifteen dollars.
Right. So that's three hundred thousand dollars of tax dollars going to subsidies. Uh, I know there's a lot of subsidies that mean well, they do well. There's a whole bunch of other, uh, nonprofits that maybe we should be funding as well. And that, 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 that's real heartburn because, um, how do we in the future set the guidelines to say, uh, we only service these particular nonprofits? And yes, your nonprofit is a great nonprofit, but we're not going to satisfy you. So in the future, how do we set the guidelines for that? Um, but what I would like to do is, I'd like to go around the room just real quick because I know there's some people here that haven't spoken at all tonight. I know we've heard from some people. But there's others that, that haven't had a chance to, um, you know, speak on the issue and, and I'd like to get their feedback. Uh, and then I'd like to move this forward, uh, as we have other business this evening as well. So, Mr. Luther, would you like to comment at all on the budget and, uh, your feelings towards, uh, the options that are in front of you this evening?
Well, I like the, the city's plan, um, of starting to reduce the subsidy money. Um, I've already got it down here that I would be supporting the ordinance appropriating a necessary funds in the amount of seven million eight hundred ninety nine thousand four hundred ninety dollars for the operation of the government and the administration of the Menominee for the year of twenty twenty five and leave the subsidies where they are at right now.
Okay, so that's what your thoughts are. We do have a motion on the floor, so we, we, we'll have to deal with the motion. But if that's, uh, once we get past this motion, we can maybe come back to that. But we, we need, I'd like to really get feedback. Thank you for that. I'd like to get feedback from anybody else. Uh, Eric, do you wanna say anything else on this?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Randy. You know, I'm still concerned certainly about the, the assessed value reduction of the city. I feel like that's possibly could continue. Hopefully not. Obviously raising taxes is some, nobody wants to do any community. So I think, you know, we got three options for the most part, you know, kinda middle of the road seems to be, you know, to me, probably the best option at this point. Um, but I do think I have a good handle on what Gretchen, um, proposed. But I suppose maybe before we do vote on that, and I think there will be a vote, you go over that just a little quicker or once, do a once over, so I'm sure that I got a handle on.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that.
That, okay, specifically. But I would probably be more likely to, you know, go with the city's recommendation, recommendation in the middle of the road of an option B. Style proposal.
All right, and I'm gonna take it back to this side. Uh, Randy, I know you spoke a little bit. Do you have anything else to add? Okay, Chad?
I favor option B and I favor we vote on Gretchen's motion.
Okay, we'll go around the room and we'll get to that vote. Uh, Mayor, you haven't said anything regarding this. I'm curious on what your thoughts are. Oh, turn your microphone on, please. Thank you.
I was thinking, I didn't want the noise to.
Rattling around?
Yeah, yeah. You know, every year this, this gets harder and harder and harder. And, you know, I think back to the days in the early two thousands when I was sitting in a chair asking for money from the city. And I knew that it was always at risk, that I, we were never guaranteed anything. Um, so in my mind, that's always, that's always been said. Um, having said that, I have always had a concern when we do these budgets that we have so little in our, in our contingency fund. Um, it's, it scares me because that's our kinda go-to fund when everybody needs something that was not budgeted. Um, so I, like Chad, am in favor of the, uh, option B that the city has recommended. Not, I, I feel bad. I wish we could fund everybody. Um, and I'm really sorry that we can't. Um, but that would be, that would be my vote, would be option B.
Okay, anybody else that hasn't had a chance to speak yet would like to speak on this? Um, uh, Lee, you haven't really, well, you spoke a little bit. I guess I'd just like to open the floor for any conversation. But there's one thing I'd like to add to this. Maybe, um, an opportunity for the city to look at another type of program for these organizations. I know Eric and I talked a little bit about grant funding. Um, it would just be a little bit more in-depth. If somebody wanted to write for some grant monies, you know, they'd have to say, hey, you know, in, for the purpose of this money, we are going to give these services. We're gonna do this and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do this and maybe open it up to a little broader spectrum. Um, and, and I would recommend that grant process midway through the year when we kinda know how the city's doing. So I don't think that, um, you know, no matter what the city council decides on tonight, I don't want those, um, organizations to feel, you know, horrible about the city because w- we're working through a, a real situation here. And I think a lot of these organizations will probably realize that. And I know the taxpayer will realize that. But what I would like to do is talk more about a grant program or grant funding in the future and get away from the, um, this automatic giving on the subsidy list. Um, because what happens is, uh, every year it seems like there's organizations that ask for more. And then they ask for more next year and the more next year. And, 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 you know, sometimes there just isn't more. And like, okay, so we're working on a major project and I can't mention names or can't go into details. But I know the city is working on a major project, a major build out in their industrial park that will offset all of this if it comes to fruition. So that being said, maybe next year there's tons of extra money. And Eric, hi Gully, Eric, I want you to give out extra more to everybody. Would you do that for me, please?
Sure.
Sure, he says, absolutely. But tonight we're faced with a little different scenario. And so, um, if it went for the thirty million dollar, uh, devaluation and, and our situation, um, in other areas, this conversation would be totally different this evening. Uh, any other feedback from any other council members that haven't spoken and we're gonna take this to a vote?
I'd like to speak even though I've spoken. Um, I think that is a great idea. And that's why the, the twenty five percent cascade, I think, should, should begin next year and, uh, give time to start creating all those ideas. And I think, I think I agree with you that this subsidy is, it's not sustainable in the way it is. And, and they've been getting less and less money every year because of inflation, but they're all getting the same amount that they got, you know, ten years ago. That's a lot less than ten years ago's dollars. So I agree with you that we should have different programs and the subsidy model should be removed. But I feel that, um, that is a next year activity now that it, they're alerted to the. that is a next year activity now that it they're alerted to that. And that this year it should be maintained as it was so that they have, we have, we have time and they have time to go there.
I would love Ben to speak.
Well, Eric, I was just wondering if, I mean, you can tell the council, because I think Chad might have mentioned it, kind of just with Gretchen's motion, what that actually means with the increase, which what David was saying in that blue column, what the increase would mean, so they know exactly what they're voting on. This isn't voting option A, option B, option C right now. That's for the ordinance.
That is correct.
Just for the subsidy portion that's going to be, it will impact that. But if you can just explain kind of the
Sure. I think I can, I think I can explain it well.
I think I can, I think I can, okay, Eric.
If I understood Gretchen motion motions correctly, is that she wants to authorize funding at the twenty twenty-four levels for subsidies except for Luddington Guard Band at the twelve thousand dollar level. Do I have that right, Gretchen? Okay, which then equals to a total of ninety-one thousand dollars. That does not include the contract for services related to Dunn County Humane Society, Dunn County Transit, and none of the new twenty twenty-five applicants are included in that funding.
That, that, to me, it sounds correct. Ben?
Yep, so that sixty-eight, two fifty would go up to, what was it, ninety-one thousand?
Ninety-one thousand, yes.
And then based on that, after we do this vote, we would move into the red, or the ordinance establishing the budget. So I just wanted to make sure council understands that prior to this vote.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor and I would call for a roll call vote on this. Oh, Jeff?
Yeah, I have a comment to make. I'm gonna be voting no on that motion. I worked for a company and when the economy got a little rough a few years back, we all got laid off, down, cut down to four days a week. We didn't have a warning, you know? And so we had to, you know, find other means of income and stuff as an individual. So I'm gonna vote no on this motion because I think we should start doing the twenty-five percent reduction and eventually phase out subsidies.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Otherwise, we're we were ready to take a vote on this motion. So roll call vote. Kate, are you ready? Go ahead, please.
Young, McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
No.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
No.
Schlue?
No.
Summerfeld?
No.
Luther?
No.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
No.
Yanko?
Yes.
Fails.
Okay, motion fails. I'm gonna bring it back to the floor again. We can either make, I'm sorry. So if you would like to go for the ordinance dollar amount or options, I guess that would be an opportunity to do so at this time. So I would look for the council. Lee?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds in the amount of seven thou- seven million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars for operation of the government and administration of the city upon nominee for year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is that a good motion?
So that's the intro, introduction.
Oh, we'd be an introduction.
I said introduction.
Yep, yep, you're good. You got it right. So we have an introduction on the floor. We need a motion to waive the first reading. Somebody, Mary?
Make a motion to waive the first reading.
Okay, is there a second, Chad?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Then we'll need a motion to waive the second reading also as well. So if anybody liked to, Jeff?
I'll make a motion, waive the second reading.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second Jeff's.
Motion made and seconded to waive the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we we need a motion to adopt the said motion, or said ordinance. Go ahead, Lee.
I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a second to that, Randy?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Okay, roll, roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
No.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
No.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
No.
McCullough?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Okay, I think we can move on with some other business in our meeting this evening. Thank you for the hard work on that, everybody. Appreciate that. That being said, moving on to the under new business. Six A modify award of Falen Park Playground Equipment Contract from Northland Recreation. Playpower LTE Farmington Incorporated. David Schofield, would you bring us up to speed on that, please?
Yeah, sure. Two meetings ago, on October twenty-first, we awarded the Falen Park Playground Equipment to Northland Recreation. Northland Recreation provided us with a contract to sign and it was under a different name. So they had asked us to sign a contract with Playpower LT Farmington. As I've come to find out, Playpower LT Farmington is the parent company to Northland Recreation because the council's authorization was specifically to award it to Northland. I didn't feel comfortable proceeding without council authorization. There is no change to the contract amount. The equipment that we're getting, this is just simply the the contractual name that we are entering into a contract with is Playpower LT Farmington, Inc.
And David, you can correct me if I'm wrong. That name of that company was included also in the bid documents. It just wasn't overly clear.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't clear. But yes, it was included. I believe the bid bond was actually from Playpower LT Farmington.
So the dollar amount doesn't change. Nothing really changes other than application of names.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, if anybody'd like to support this, we could do so at this time. Chad, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion to modify the order of the Failing Park Playground Equipment Contract from Northland Recreation to Playpower LT Farmington Incorporated at the original contract amount.
Okay, thank you. Cody?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to six B, proposed downtown LLC operation plan. I know Becca was here this evening and talked about it. I, there's a lot of things happening within the community. Downtown Menominee is an important aspect of downtown, is, you know, a thriving area. And we need to look at that as a, as a plus for Menominee. I'm gonna ask for more detail in the future years, but I think this go around, I think it is what it is. And if somebody'd like to make a motion to support the proposed downtown operation plan, we could do so at this time. Randy?
I'll make a motion to approve the Main Street of Menominee, Inc., operating plan for two thousand twenty-five as presented.
Okay, thank you. Good motion. Is there a second to that, Laura?
I'll second Randy's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to six C, proposed development agreement with Fish and Magic, Fish and Magicians. All right. LLC Three Hundred Crescent Street, Menominee. You know, we look at these buildings, especially in downtown, blighted spots and things of that nature. And huh, well, there it have it. There we have it right there, I guess. It's kind of an icon downtown, you know? It's kind of like it's been there a long time. And I remember it was, I think it was George's Gas Station and and then it was all kinds of things that after that. But I really think this is really important that if somebody like Jeff Rowley wants to take a building like this and transform it into something really cool and special, that, you know, it's not just a fly-by-night operation. He's got something that's really gonna work down there. So I'm pretty excited about this. The, the, there's a rendering. The cool thing is, and I talked to Jeff a little bit about this, is this is, this type of business brings people in from all over, not only just from Menominee, from Minnesota, but all over the place. And the cool thing is, it's gonna transform this building. It's gonna give it a brand-new look downtown, but also promotes a brand-new business and a brand-new business downtown. And it, and it's, and it's a drawing card for others to stay in our motels, to dine, wine and shop in Menominee and and do good things. So I think this is incredible and I really wanted to thank Jeff for, you know, putting it out there and and making this happen. So I would totally support this and I would look for a motion if anybody else would like to support this at this time as well. Gretchen?
I, I would definitely like to ma- make a motion to approve the development agreement with Fish and Magician LLC as presented. And separate from the motion, I would like to make a comment that you're destroying six-year-old Gretchen's heart. Because when I was six, I was going to, this was gonna be my house. Had my eye on it for, you know, forty-four years, five years. But I think it's great and I think it'll go nicely with our new trail down to the river.
You're right, absolutely. Is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I will second Gretchen's motion. And I have a comment for Jeff. You know, I'm thinking if you were to put a deck on the roof, you'd have a great view of the lake. It'd be just a beautiful view.
Jeff's deck and barbecue. They could have fish fries up there. All right, cool. All right, any other discussion on this? Roll call vote, please.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, good. Thank you for that. Congratulations, Jeff Rowley. That'll be fun. Okay, we're moving on down to budget transfers. We do have a budget, a couple of budget transfers a, tonight. Small one, but Eric?
Yeah, we do have one budget transfer. If we could bring up our chief building inspector, who was also once chief building inspector of the year, in case anyone has forgotten.
I saw his picture on a Wheaties box. Was that in your room?
It may be. I might have an autographed copy of that.
Wow, that's incredible. Building inspector of the year, wow. I don't know why he gets to do that, but wow, that's incredible. So tell us a little bit about the budget, yeah. Tell us a little bit about your budget transfer and why you need it.
Well, our dollar amount for schools and conferences was, was what it was at because the state of Wisconsin was supposed to update their building codes this year. We're on the twenty-sixteen Universal Dwelling Code for one and two family and we're on the twenty-fifteen commercial. We were supposed to jump to the twenty-one commercial, but that's caught up in legislature right now. So we got some extra money and I'd like to transfer it to our vehicle account to supply this new vehicle with a ladder, a drill and flashlight. Right now I rob it from one to go to the other. And with our new inspector, he's advancing in his certifications. So he's gonna need the same stuff in that vehicle too. So we're just gonna use some of that money to outfit this new truck we have.
Okay, any questions for Dave while we got him up there? Great. If anybody would like to support this budget transfer with a motion, you can do so at this time. Lee?
Go find on right through it. Approved the budget transfers as presented.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Chad?
Second Lee's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, David. Okay, that brings us down to the mayor's report. I've got a real, I got like twenty minutes worth. So I'll make it as short as possible. Actually, a lot of good things are happening in Menominee. We've been talking about industrial park, tech park, things like that. We had an economic development meeting yesterday morning or Tuesday morning, I should say, early. And it was kind of interesting. Just tell you a little bit of a story. Last week I got a call from somebody needing an emergency driver to go up and down Iowa, Illinois, down one side and up and then down across and down and up the other side and put up large, like our Wisconsin statue by the lake. And so I said, you know what? I told Pam, I said, you know, if you could just cancel my week, I'm gonna go take a road trip with somebody and put up these statuettes for Illinois at all their rest areas, the tourist rest, rest areas up and down Illinois. So I was like, okay, so Pam said, I got it, mayor, don't worry about it. So I climbed in the truck and headed out with with Todd and we headed to Illinois. Wow, Illinois is a really long state. Especially when you go down and then back up and then across and then down and then back up again. So it was a long week. But that being said, you know, there is so much photo op going on in front of our state of Wisconsin. And there were already people before we could get these things installed wanting to take their pictures in front of these Illinois statuette thingies. And the interesting thing is, on the way back, of course, the lights went out on the truck. So that was interesting. But where it's leading me to is how much, how important tourist in dollars are to the area and what we've got here for tourists to do. And when, when we have enhancements around the community, it is amazing. And so there's a few things like fixing up our lake, doing our lake and improvements to the lake and putting a slip dock in this next, this next spring, summer. The lights down at Wolfski's Bay have been turned on. We're a little shy this year on some lights. We didn't realize so many strings were gonna be burned out and and of course, budget, budget dollars are always tight. So if anybody's got any extra lights or ornaments or anything like that, would you please let me know and we'll hang them up or come on down to Wolfski's Bay and and put them up? We even talked about businesses possibly taking a portion and putting up their own little display of lights at Wolfski's Bay, but it's an attraction. Same with anything outdoors like Winter Wonderland and so forth. There, today I did spend. So where I was going to with my explanation of my Illinois trip up and down and up and down and up and down was Pam rescheduled my whole week to this week. So yesterday was like seven thirty, eight thirty, nine thirty, ten thirty, one thirty, whatever it was. And today I got a chance to go out to the Walmart Distribution Centers tour of all of their new robots and all their new equipment. And and I got there at quarter to ten. I was actually on time and I got out of there a little after two. But oh my goodness. I mean, it was actually really a super amazing. And I hope that they'll do a video so that the public can see what's really going on inside of the Walmart Distribution Center out there. And I, and and the amount of people they employ. You know, when you look at seven hundred people out at the Walmart Distribution Center, another four hundred and twenty-five people over here at the store. And and we talked about in, in the classroom after the tour, we had a breakout session for over an hour and we talked about employment and wages and economic, economic impact to the community and what Stout does to the community and how that impacts Walmart and the tech school and what job offerings it is and what pay scales they're at. And and their pay is really, really good out at at Walmart Distribution and center and so forth. So it was just a, a whole encapsulation of what it takes, what an employer looks for in in a city like Menominee. You know, does it have things for people to do? Is there, is there fun things? Is there education and all that? So today was a, it was dedicated to the Walmart Distribution Center, but I have to laugh at Pam because she's got me booked. I'm ma- I'm making up for last week, this week. But there is one special recognition that tonight that I have to put out there because I think it's important that we all realize how important our wives are. And David Schofield, I gotta give you credit. I mean, he is so special. He wanted his wife to be here with him tonight because it's their twentieth wedding anniversary. So good job, David. So Diane? Thank you, thank you Diane for being here and being with your husband on your twentieth wedding anniversary. That was sweet, so. All right, well, thank you. And that's all I had, but I would just wanna go around the room. Eric?
Yeah, real quick reminder for December second will be the last of our budget meetings. You'll have tax increment district budgets, project budgets and utilities budgets presented for you. And then I, I wanna touch a little bit on what the mayor said about the Walmart upgrade. That kind of an upgrade is one of the reasons why that personal property tax law change was made. Because that, the amount of millions of dollars that went into that upgrade obviously would have increased their value, which is certainly great for us on levy. But why they made that change is because you look at other states that are throughout the United States that don't have that personal property tax. That would be a lure for a Walmart distribution then to go to one of those other states, erect a building That would be a lure for a Walmart distribution then to go to one of those other states, erect a building and then take those jobs with them. So that, that is the flip side of that argument development because it does allow us to continue to have those jobs here in our area. Encourage that economic development. So there, there is a flip side to it to think about. And those are people that are living and working here around our community. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. Oh, and then also that December second, uh, meeting, it's back to Monday nights as usual. So I wanna thank all of you for uh, being nice and moving those to, moving these last couple of meetings to Wednesday. Thank you. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Kate, do you have anything to add?
Um, well, we just wrapped up one election and we're going right back into another. So, um, December first is the first day that candidates can start circulating papers for the spring election. So all of you people in your respective wards, I think you know who you are. If you don't know, you can come and ask me. But yes, that's, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. It's coming up pretty quick.
Okay, great, thank you. David Schofield? Nothing? Caitlin? No? No? Um, Ben? Okay, we'll go around the room. Uh, Cody? Mary? Chad?
Where do we get the papers to circulate? You can email them to us or we gotta go to the website and get them or?
They are on the website on the city clerk's elections page. Otherwise, if you want me to get you a hard copy, I'm happy to do that in the office too. Yeah.
Okay, Randy? No, going around the room. Jeff? Eric? No, Gretchen?
Drive safely, please, as we're start heading into actual snow.
Okay, Laura? Lee? Uh, one last thing. Oh, oh, Matthew, you have anything? Okay. The other thing I wanna add to is calendar parking is in effect. So, um, and you know, it was interesting today on how calendar parking works because, you know, it's odd and it's even. So you wanna tomorrow, you wanna be on, like if you're on a, if it's an odd day, you wanna be on the odd number side of the street. So your house number is two fourteen, that'd be the even side of the street. So you'd wanna be tomorrow, you'd wanna be parked because it kicks in at two AM in the morning. So that's the, that's the catch all for the public is they don't quite understand how even and odd works. So just be clear that if anybody asks you, you can explain it correctly because I've been known to say, well, let me think now, um. But anyway, so anything else from anybody? No, no, no. Okay, we're gonna keep on moving. Thank you, everybody. Uh, moving down to, um, claims. It's, it's a revised claims list in front of you this evening. So if you'd like to make a motion to support the claims, we can do so at this time. Look, Cody?
I'll move to approve the revised claims list as presented.
Thank you. Is there a, Mary?
I will second Cody's motion.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Licenses. Uh, moves us down to licenses. Anybody like to support the licenses with a motion? You can do that at this time. Mary?
I would make a motion to support the, um, um, the licenses as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Jeff?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, thank you. Does anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn? I'm gonna go down the line. Cody?
I'll move to adjourn.
All right, motion made to adjourn. Is there a, a second to that?
I'll second.
Laura for the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, everybody. It was a good meeting. Appreciate everybody's time.
Recording.